Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco, Pasco Council Meeting. The council, the council thanks you for being a part of our city government at regular meetings. And the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco.wa slash agenda. Please note that the city council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be accessed through go to webinar. This meeting is being also televised live on Pasco TV, channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland. And also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Through proclamation number 20 dash 28 dash four or point four, Governor Inslee extended the directive making temporary changes to Open Public Meetings Act. These virtual meetings will continue until the OPMA restrictions are lifted. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and or questions for items not on the, not on the agenda through, by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. So with that, there's the housekeeping items, but I also want to continue and be consistent on making sure that everybody knows that we are using social distancing. We are, we got our distance from each and every one of the count, members in the room. We continue to enforce the, the masks in the, in the city hall. And we have disinfectant in the back of the room and everything's been disinfected before we started the meetings. And I, and I want to reiterate that I want to continue to communicate that because as you will hear more throughout the meeting, I think everybody knows by now that Franklin and Benton and Yakima counties have increased in their numbers for the spread of the virus and we need to, we need to do our part to continue to work hard and be safe. And try to prevent the spread from virus and right now the, the most effective way to spread the virus is to wear the mask and prevent it from, you know, droplets and, and the virus from spreading to other people and keeping our distance, being within, being in the small groups, preferably with people just in your household and making sure that, that we just continue to be safe and do the best we can. So I want to make sure that's well communicated. Thank you for that. Next, we'll have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present.
All seven accounted for, Mayor.
Thank you. And now we'll rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And now we'll move right along to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council, by a council member or the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. And on the consent agenda, we have the approval of meeting minutes to approve the minutes of the Pasco City Council meeting held on June 1st, 2020. And the workshop held on June 8th, 2020. We have bills and communications to approve the claims in the total amount of $5,146,218.33. And, and then to approve bad debt write off for utility billing, ambulance, cemetery, general accounts, miscellaneous accounts, and municipal court accounts receivable in the total amount of $107,504.95. And of that amount authorized $0 to be turned over for collection. Next item on the consent agenda is a PMC update to street overlay and real estate excise tax. To adopt ordinance number 4492, updating Title III revenue and finance of the Pasco Municipal Code by revising sections within chapter 3.20, Real Estate Excise Tax, and 3.175, Street Overlay Fund. Item D, PSA Amendment, Moore Center for Property, to approve resolution number 3966, authorizing amendment number eight to the purchase and sale agreement between the City of Pasco and Moore Holdings Company LLC. And further authorize the city manager to execute said amendment. So that is a consent agenda. If, does anybody have any questions or anything they'd like to add? Or, or delete for that matter, or move forward? If not, then Mayor Protem, would you like to entertain a motion?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda as read.
There's been a motion to, to approve the consent agenda as read?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, let's try it again.
I'll second that, Serrano.
Okay, Mr. Serrano, second that motion. Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yeah.
Milne.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
And Martinez.
Yes.
Great. All seven unanimous.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Alright, we'll move right along to proclamations and acknowledgements. Today, we have a special presentation for, and we have a proclamation for Juneteenth Day. Mr. Zabel, would you like to give an introduction?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and guests. Just a couple of comments. Juneteenth marks a very special day in the African-American community. And it's commonly thought, it's actually the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. Interestingly enough, June 19th marks the day that Major Gordon, Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston with the news that the Civil War was over and the Union had prevailed and that the enslaved were now free. Couple of pieces of history that go along with that. This is a couple of months after the actual defeat of the Confederate Army where Lee surrendered to Grant the prior April. And pretty close to two and a half, actually two and a half years almost to the day from the Emancipation Proclamation. So it kind of, I think, gives people a piece of history as to what happened or didn't happen in our country at that point in time. News didn't travel fast for a lot of reasons, but I think some of the reason in this case is news wasn't supposed to travel fast. You know, for whatever reason, you know, and, and, and so obviously the news was a great day. And that's been a celebration in our country and particularly in the African-American community since. And we do have a couple of guests tonight and a proclamation, Mayor, for you to, to discuss.
Thank you. So what I'll do is today we have two members of the Tri-Cities Juneteenth Community Council Members, Edmund Daniels and Charavella McGary that is with us today. But what I'll do first is I'll read the proclamation and then allow them an opportunity to, to give some words. So today's Juneteenth Day, June 19th, 2020. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, declaring that all enslaved persons in the Confederate states in rebellion, in rebellion free as of January 1st, 1863, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America, which formally ended slavery in the nation. And whereas news of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and one half years to June 19th, 1865 in Galveston, Texas, where US General Gordon Granger read General Order Number Three announcing the total abolishment of slavery. And whereas thus, June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated by African-American communities for over 150 years. And whereas the African-American community in Pasco has made significant contributions to our history and quality of life of Pasco and Franklin County. And whereas annual Juneteenth celebrations in the City of Pasco have been occurring over the last several decades. However, this year, public celebrations have been unfortunately canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, I Saul Martinez, Mayor of the City of Pasco, Washington, do hereby declare June 19th, 2020 as Juneteenth Day in the City of Pasco, Washington, and urge all residents to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. So therefore, in witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Pasco, Washington to be affixed as 15th Day of June, 2020. So Mr. Edmund Daniels and Charavella McGary, would you like to share some words? Mr. Daniels?
What do you, what do you need to know?
Well, I would just like to hear some words from you on what your thought is. And unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we won't be celebrating and, and participating in that wonderful parade and the food that I have been to several times and the excitement that goes on over at the park. But just wanted to know if you would like to share some thoughts?
Well, I thought of this when my parents were still alive and one of their friends passed away. And at the service, I saw my mother, my father and all my cousins and all of their friends. They was all crying and hugging each other and I just thought it would be nice if we could get together and laugh and have tears of joy instead of tears of sadness. So I came up with, I called it Fun Day the first couple of years. And then one of my relatives said, well, why don't you do it Juneteenth, the 19th? So I went and got some information from my uncle and he told me all about Juneteenth, which 90% of the people in the US don't know anything about Juneteenth. It's not, it's not in the history books or anything like that, but that's one of the, I always call it the ugly part of our history, you know? When the first president of the, of the United States owned slaves and sold it to the next two or three, all of them owned people. So that's not something that you put in, put in the books. So we've been doing it for 41 plus years.
Well, well, thank you for that history, Mr. Edmonds. I just know that I've certainly appreciated the fun and the culture and just everything that, that has been done in the past. The excitement and just the laughter and like you said, all the, the wonderful things and memories that, that you put together. And then in celebration of Juneteenth, I think this also gives us an opportunity to learn more about, about, you know, the history and how we can come to, to bring peace and, and just joy from, from where we were to where we are today. Is Charavella McGary available?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to say some words?
I would. With everything that's going on in the world now and everything that we are witnessing with the protests and the rallies, Juneteenth is now at the forefront of people's minds. I've seen it a lot on social media about, you know, celebrating Juneteenth and doing this in Juneteenth's name. I just want you guys to know that Pasco, we have been at the forefront of celebrating Juneteenth. We've been doing that for 40 plus years. I think it's a great platform and at this time it's excellent because we can come out as the people that have always been recognized as celebrating this and trying to bring our community together. So I am looking forward to next year, Juneteenth being pushed as hard as the Grand Ole Fort Celebration and the Cinco de Mayo. Within three months, we would have three excellent celebrations celebrating the diversity here in the Tri-Cities. May, June and July would be excellent. So I'm looking forward to Juneteenth, working with the city council. We've joined the Tri-City Chamber to do more things to get out there, to be recognized. As I said, we are one of the only places in Washington State that is recognized as having an actual Juneteenth celebration.
Well, I sure appreciate all the work and effort that you guys put into this celebration. I would only ask that next year we make it twice as big and twice as fun. Cause I, I, I'm just saying this with all my heart. I, I've been involved in it for at least two to three years. And I miss it and we're looking forward to having it again next year. And again, I appreciate all the effort and that you and Mr. Edmonds, who is a, a long time staple in this community and a long time pillar of this community, who's probably one of the gentlemen that knows more about Pasco than I've ever met. So anyway, again, I appreciate you guys coming online and being with us at this meeting and all the effort and the work you guys do to keep this history event going. So thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much for giving us the proclamation, continuing to recognize the work that we're trying to do in the community.
Mayor, if I can say words?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Barajas.
Thank you. Ms. Charavella, Mr. Edmonds, this is Mayor Protem Barajas. I've been at your parade and thank you for mentioning that Pasco is one of the only celebrating the Juneteenth in the state of Washington. I know you've collaborated in other events and promoting the Juneteenth and what the history is with our city of Pasco residents. I also want to send a shout out to Ms. Juneteenth Queen, Jaylani Green, who graduated this year. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Definitely. A shout out to Jaylani.
Thank you. And I believe Princess, I forgot her name, Aria Ira is also graduating this year. Congratulations to both of them and congratulations to you and all the hard work that you put into the Juneteenth celebrations. Thank you again.
Thank you. And those young ladies will continue to represent the Tri-Cities for this year until next year.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Mr. Edmonds, did you want to say one more thing?
Well, this is Councilman Serrano. I'm just curious, the plan or the only option to entirely scrap things? Or is there a possibility to have a later celebration in the year? Or, I mean, I'm just curious. I don't know if that's an option. I don't know if, how that would work, if that's even a possibility. So just wanted to ask that.
Well, I'm really thinking that this pandemic is going to last.
Sure, sure.
We may not be able to socially gather in larger groups.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to know if there was a contingency plan in the event that we ever get to Phase 1.5.
Well, what I was thinking was some things that we were, had planned to do at the library, some things that were smaller socially that we'd be able to handle the crowd and keep count of what was going on. So there are some things that we are looking at to do later on, if it is possible, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Just please keep us posted.
We definitely will.
And anybody else? Well, with that, I would.
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
The, the audio delay is always a bit of a bear, isn't it? So I just wanted to thank you both for, for, for your hard work. And again, just like the other council members, I'm, I'm deeply regretful that we won't be able to celebrate this year. I did, you had brought up the protest and kind of the certain situation earlier, Mr. Daniels. And so one thing I wanted to point out is we do have a resolution that we'll be discussing and hopefully passing later this evening. Kind of addressing some of the protesting and those and the peaceful, and the peaceful assembly that is, you know, that's something that we as a city believe strongly needs to be protected. So if you have a chance, I'd love for you to keep an eye on that as we go through that a little later down the agenda.
I see that. I will.
You will. Alright, well, once again, thank you very much for all the work you do, Mr. Edmonds, for what you have, what you have brought to the city and helping so many youth. And are you still, are you still a part of our recreational department, Mr. Edmonds?
No.
Oh, you left us, huh?
A couple of years ago. Get some younger people in there.
Alright, well.
Trying to let the new blood get in there.
Well, tell your wife hello for us and thank you again for, for participating and bringing us this. And I want to just challenge the community to please just look it up and get more educated on it. And, and it's really is, it really is important for us to know what it's all about and why we celebrate here in Pasco. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, so we go to the next, next on our agenda item. We have, we have reports and committees and from officers. Anybody like to share anything they did this last week?
Yeah, this is Councilman Milne, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Milne.
Alright, thank you. Hey, I just wanted to mention that on Saturday, I did attend the Latin Business Association. They had a meeting for the downtown business owners. And even though I didn't talk, I was trying to reassure people that the city council as a whole really wants to see the downtown come back and that we are doing whatever we can to help them out. So I just, Tony, I thought it was a pretty good meeting. They talked about grants and what they should do and how they could get on board. Again, I just wanted to reiterate that as a council, I know we all really want the downtown Pasco to do well and try to do my part to help that process.
Thank you, Mr. Milne. I would like to, not to put you on the spot, Mrs. Barajas, but I know that on Saturday I was scheduled to attend a meeting with the State Health District and the governor. And I, I was in and out of service, but Councilwoman Protem Barajas stepped up for me and attended the meeting. Is there anything you would like to share on that, Councilwoman Barajas?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, I was talking to myself. Yes, I did attend a meeting with Governor Inslee and several of the elected officials from Yakima County, Benton and Franklin Counties in regards to the COVID and the high positives that we have in our region and reasons why we can't move forward. So basically it's, they're, they're working with the counties to provide us more equipment. Some of the other mayors shared things that they're doing within their cities to allow some of the smaller cities to open. For example, some businesses are providing temperature checks before they go into the stores and providing hand sanitizer and protection masks for individuals that need to go into the stores to shop. But again, it's, I mean, it's, it's what we all already know in regards to not being able to move, move forward into a modified Phase One or even Phase Two. And just really the concerns from the community in regards to the loss of income and the businesses, how they're struggling and just the assistance that will be out there offered for these smaller businesses. And again, just to reiterate, wash your hands, go out only when absolutely necessary. Individuals that are high risk use measures to be more protective of yourselves and be aware of your environments and, yeah, really just taking care of not spreading or going out there necessarily.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking that call and I, I was actually on it for a little while but got cut off. But, and then again, I talked to Salvador Salazar, the representative for Governor Inslee, and sharing some of the information and again, you know, talking about the pros and cons to the whole situation. But, but advocating for our businesses to open up, but we have to do our part. And that's why I keep trying to, to, you know, to help and communicate that it's, it's really our responsibility to try to reduce those numbers. And I, and I think if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Zabel will talk a little bit about the free testing that's going to be going on later this week over at the Happo Center. We'll make sure we mention that before the end of the meeting. But other than that, thank you for that information, Councilwoman Barajas. Anybody else?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to report that I attended Ben Franklin Transit Board Meeting. We've had a couple of additional meetings for special items. I think more than anything, I just want to report that BFT, even though we have definitely a decreased ridership, there are folks who are still able to access the bus and able to go from place to place to appointments, things of that nature. And so buses are still operating and still operating for free. But generally, the main, I guess takeaway for me is much like the city, BFT has done a good job of being able to build its reserves and being able to be in a good financial standing. So as it looks like right now, the, BFT will be able to, you know, move past COVID in the future. And so just wanted to report that and I'll keep you updated.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Anybody else?
Yeah, I do want to call attention to one thing that I meant to mention last week. I saw that the city has finally posted its deputy city manager job. So I know that's not something we often talk about, but because Mr. Zabel is only one individual and I know he's got a very competent staff, I thought it'd be worth noting that in public because I always love seeing great people who are excited about our city applying for those jobs, especially those kind of higher level jobs that get to interface with us or maybe they're forced to interface with us. I don't know how you see it.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano, for that information. Okay, if there's no other comments, we will move right along to item number seven, hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. And tonight we have a, a topic of six year, 2021 to 2026, Six Year Transportation Improvement Plan. And we will have, is Rick White on the line?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am. Thank you. And I just very briefly, of course, council considered this last week at the workshop. And Mr. Ford will present this. He's the expert on this subject. We have basically a planning document as opposed to a budgeting document. And the public hearing on that document is tonight. And I think Mr. Ford is capable of taking it from there.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Ford, how are you doing tonight?
Doing very well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. White and council. Last week's discussion at the, at the workshop, I thought went very well. We had a very broad discussion about the number of projects that we've got currently on our list. And since that time, we've really not received any comments as to make changes. So what I would like to suggest is that we open up for the public hearing and receive whatever public comment we may have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Ford. So before opening up the public hearing, I will ask the council, do you have any questions of staff before I open the public hearing?
I do have a possible correction or something I caught.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Alvarado.
The actual pages on the, on the screen right now, number 30 and 33 by name, I think, seem flipped to me, but I could be wrong. So the bicycle pathway, the way I read it, I could, I could be wrong. I could be understanding that those, those two, the Sacagawea Trail and number 33. And so I think maybe those are flipped, but maybe I understood those wrong. So maybe just.
Good, Mr. Ford.
Yeah, no, I, I believe that. Yeah, no, I, I believe that those are, those are correct, um, what we've got is a Sacagawea Road, uh, project, uh, which is the bike pedestrian project that we're working on with, uh, WashDOT, uh, and then we've got, uh, uh, um, uh, North Road Forty East Pathway and, and so, North Road, uh, Forty East Pathway is number thirty-three, that's the one going north-south and the, uh, Sacagawea Road Pedestrian Bicycle Pathway is number thirty, and again, that's the one coming from SR twelve.
Is that one, uh, to create connectivity to, um, to the freeway, uh, uh, over the bridge or?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for making that note, Mr. Alvarado, uh, any other council member have any questions or comments before I open the hearing?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Okay, Mr. Maloney?
Um, I did receive an, I did receive an email earlier, um, from a community member, um, there was no specific changes or anything, it was just a, uh, general acknowledgement of, um, thinking that this is going in the right direction. Would it be appropriate to reference some of that during the hearing or would, uh, read that to the, in the record or would it be better just to go ahead and, and wait till afterwards and just share a small snippet of that?
During the hearing? Okay, well, we will, uh, open up, open up the hearing and then, uh, we do have one public comment from, uh, Carl Holder that, um, that will be, uh, talk, uh, speaking tonight, but with that, I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Carl Holder, is, is he on the line? Oh, he's not on the line. Okay. Okay, so he's, uh, he's not on the line, I don't know if it's technical difficulties or, or he couldn't make it, but, uh, with that, Mr. Maloney, did you wanna, did you wanna share, uh, the comments from, uh, you received today?
Sure, I'll, I'll try to read quickly, um, so this is from, uh, Dave Beach from, uh, a board member for Bike Tri-Cities. He said, um, "I've been reviewing your updated tips documents for the city of Pasco, I just wanted to express to you how pleased and encouraged I am seeing how much value Pasco places on investing scarce dollars into infrastructure projects that will enhance active transportation. We recognize that these investments will pay big dividends toward Pasco, toward making Pasco the calm, livable place we all desire. I so much appreciate the community, uh, culture and values that your leadership team brings to the forefront. Uh, please relay my kudos, appreciation to your team and, and encourage your city council to approve with enthusiasm the many outstanding projects embedded, embodied within the tips document. Two of my favorites are, one, the FCID Canal Bike Head Study, Project Twenty-Three, this established canal corridor across, um, miles of west Pasco neighborhoods would provide an iconic linear park, uh, connecting so many different origins and destinations that'd be hard to count. Two, the Sacagawea Road Bike Head Pathway, Project Thirty. This project is a part, is Pasco's part of a larger project that ties together the Tri-Cities, Sacagawea Park, Hood Park, and the McNary Wildlife Refuge, while als, while enhancing the Snake River Bridge crossing at Burbank. The pathway would also support the route of a new official, uh, US bike, um, route from Clarkston, Washington to the Pacific Coast. Thank you for your immense efforts, please keep me in the, in the loop as things develop and allow me to help along the way. Yeah, that was Dave Beach from, uh, Bike Tri-City.
Thank you, uh, very encouraging, um, information you provided there, Mr. Maloney, thank you very much. Uh, well, this gets a little awkward for me because, um, I would ask if anybody else wishes to speak to this item that's in the, that's in the audience, but, uh, with Mr. Holder, uh, not being on the line, uh, and nobody else here, I will formally just, uh, uh, ask for a second call on any comments and the third and final call for public comments regarding, uh, this, this hearing. So I'm gonna close the public hearing and I will ask, um, if there's any other comments from council members, if not, then I would ask for a motion from council. So it doesn't sound like there's other comments. Ms. Barajas, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, would you entertain the motion, please?
Absolutely, Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-nine-six-seven adopting the two thousand twenty-one and through two thousand twenty-six six-year transportation improvement program for the city of Pasco for the purpose of guiding the development, design, and construction of a local and regional transportation improvements.
This is Councilmember Alvarado, I have a second.
All right, there's been a motion, uh, for resolution three-nine-six-seven and a second, so all those, uh, in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? So it passes unanimously, Mr. Ford, thank you for, for, uh, your report and for coming in today and, uh, and, uh, thank you for the hard work, uh, that you've put into this, cause obviously it's a good one and people are excited about it, so let's move forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next, for ord, uh, next on the agenda, number eight, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings, we have, um, a quasi judicial, uh, um, topic, a Harris Road Bush Rezone and Mr. White, would you like to give us an introduction, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, this proposed rezone involves, uh, a site just a little under two acres, it's just south of the Harris Road, uh, property and west of Shoreline Estates and existing subdivision in the city of Pasco. The proposal is to change it, is to change the zoning from RS twenty, which is our largest lot zoning district, to RS twelve, and the purpose of the proposed change is to allow plating of this property that would accommodate four lots rather than three, which is the maximum that the RS twenty zoning district allows. The hearing examiner conducted a public hearing on this proposal on May thirteenth and after the appeal period expired, has recommended, and a, a recommendation of approval to city council.
Okay, thank you for that report. Uh, does any council members have any questions or, or, um, issues with, with this request?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Maloney, I do have a question.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. White, when I'm looking at this document, I see that there were comments submitted suggesting that this would, that, um, this may decrease the property, their property value, um, and I, I, I'm asking a process question, um, as opposed to, um, questioning the examiner's inclusion, how is that incorporated into the, into the examiner's, um, review and, um, and, uh, um, ultimate recommendation of this?
Yes, Mr. Maloney, that, that, um, puzzlingly was not followed through by the, uh, citizen offering comments. The examiner recognized those comments and, uh, city staff, once the hearing examiner, public hearing was complete, um, and the recommendation was offered by the examiner mailed those, that recommendation to that citizen and as of, uh, the time period for appeals, there was no written appeal of the examiner's recommendation.
So in essence, it was a comment, uh, because it was not an appeal during the appeal window, it, it is not coming as a formal appeal of the, um, of the matter, is that?
That's, yes, that's correct, actually, the same citizen offered, I believe, two comments or maybe even three, um, but no, there was no follow-up appeal of the examiner's recommendation.
Okay, thank you, I'm, uh, confused by that point and, uh, appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney, anybody else? If not, um, Councilwoman Barajas, would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely, Mayor, I move to approve, sorry, I move to adopt ordinance number four-four-nine-three, rezoning a parcel located, um, at eleven-nine-twenty Harris Road from RS twenty to RS twelve and further authorized publication by summary own.
Thank you, there's been a motion to adopt ordinance number four-four-nine-three, is there a second?
This is Councilmember Alvarado, I'll second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. So all, uh, all those in favor of the motion ordinance, uh, number four-four-nine-three, uh, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? It, it passes unanimously, thank you. I thank you for that, council, and next, uh, we'll, uh, on the agenda, we'll talk about the peaceful assembly resolution. Mr. Zabel, would you like to give an introduction for this, please?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, council. So at your June one, uh, meeting, council formed a subcommittee to work with, uh, Inclusion Diversity and Equity Commission, uh, and other community leaders for the purpose of formulating a resolution affirming the, uh, right to assembly for the purpose of, uh, peaceful protest. Uh, council, subcommittee got to work very quickly on that, we, uh, we were able to have a subcommittee meeting, I think, the very next day and pulled together a list of, uh, community meeting, excuse me, community leaders, uh, that might be beneficial to talk to and starting to develop this resolution and that occurred, uh, that list, uh, was developed and, and the meeting occurred on June fourth. So we were able to pull that out the first week, uh, a lot came out of that discussion, that was very productive, uh, you know, you've heard some of the difficult history earlier tonight, uh, with the African-American community, there was discussion about Jim Crow laws and, and, uh, a number of things and I, I think that discussion really helped to kinda shape, uh, not only the peaceful assembly portion of the resolution, but some other pieces, uh, uh, that need acknowledging, uh, you know, on behalf of our country and, and maybe perhaps even what's happened in this community. Uh, can recall, I mean, remind the council that even, until recently, we, we weren't even, we weren't able to do district voting and we went through a process on that and our representation on the council is much more representative of the community now. So there's been things that have been going on throughout the history of the city, uh, council passed resolution thirty-eight-twenty, uh, back in two thousand seventeen, that, uh, listed a lot of, I think, of great, great goals and ideals for the community and kinda set out, uh, in many respects, uh, a vision, and so that, that as well is kinda captured by uh, this updated resolution, we were able to put a draft together and, uh, get that distributed back out to the community members, uh, that we'd worked with the previous week, uh, got some feedback on that from, uh, a number of the, the folks that were helping us and then, uh, we're able to, um, get that, the committee was able to, to kinda synthesize that information and put it in the form of a final resolution, uh, such as you have before you right now. Now, recognizing that, uh, you know, the subcommittee's three council members and now we have all seven, there may be, there may be some changes, uh, in some of the verbiage, so you have a couple of options, you have an option, one, for a motion that adopts a resolution as it's written, and then you have an option two for the motion that adopts the, a resolution that, uh, may be, uh, slightly modified based on discussion among council tonight, so, uh, staff recommendations, council begin your deliberations, discussion on the resolution and, and, uh, take appropriate action.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zabel, I appreciate it and, uh, before we continue, I would just like to send out a big thank you to the three council members who were on that subcommittee and put the time and effort into, uh, expeditiously getting this, um, getting this, uh, uh, this product out and working with, uh, our inclusivity committees and some of the other, uh, uh, groups that we have here in Pasco to, to basically communicate how important an issue this is and how, um, and, and, and how, what, or what we're willing to commit ourselves to do, so I just wanna say thank you for the work and effort that, uh, the subcommittee put into this, and I, I think what I would like to do is, uh, if you don't mind, uh, Councilwoman Barajas, if you make a motion and then we can discuss, we can discuss that motion and then move forward to the next if we have to, uh, would you be okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So, uh, we have, uh, motion for option number one. I move to adopt resolution number three-nine-six-eight reaffirming the right of the people, people to peacefully assemble.
Okay, there's been a motion, uh, do I hear a second?
This, this is Councilmember Maloney, I'll second that.
Okay, and now there's been a second, so this is the time I'd like to open it up for discussion. Uh, does anybody have any comments they would like to share or questions, um, on, on the resolution as, as it is written?
Yeah, this is Councilman Serrano, I, I'd just like to call attention, I know we've changed the title to peaceably assembled, but then we throughout the body of the document reference, uh, quite frequently peaceful protest and, and when we recognize that as a constitutional right, that is not a constitutional right. It may have been adopted by courts subsequently, but, uh, the actual constitutional right that's protected is the peaceably assemble, so my preference would be to keep that verbiage, uh, peaceably assembled throughout the documents, um, so I would, I think it's, looking on the PDF, it's about seven times in the, the whereas clauses, um, I know it seems like, uh, splitting the hairs, uh, but again, I, I think it's very important that, uh, especially when we reference the constitution, that we use the constitutional language. Um, so that would be my one consideration for, for modification. Um, and then I think for me, and this might be dialogue that we have that ensues, um, helping to understand section three, the pledge of the council, um, just helping to understand what additionally we might wanna seek to do to engage the community in the open and honest dialogue. Um, like you, Mayor, I, I appreciate the inclusivity diverse, uh, diversity and equity commission as well as our council members. Um, but I'm thinking that if we're going to continue, uh, I guess more full port press on open and honest dialogue, for me, my preference would be to see, uh, our committee that we've already developed, the IDE, uh, out there maybe with more well-defined parameters or assignments, uh, something where we can say, hey, you know, we created this commission that was in great part, uh, from six of the council members were, who were here, uh, at the time about two years ago, so I'd, I'd really like to see them on behalf of the council, um, engage in that dialogue and bring additional ideas to us. Um, so those are kind of my general comments and thoughts that I think would be, again, the language is, uh, I'm gonna hold tight to that, but, uh, I understand that, uh, some might not agree with that and that's fine, but, again, more dialogue on what section three we're really committing to, what we're trying to do and how we wanna achieve it would be helpful to me. And again, that might be a following conversation another night, uh, um, uh, workshop meeting, I don't know, just throwing that out there for conversation, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Serrano, Mr. Zabel?
If, if I could just respond to that last part and, uh, you know, one of the feedback, uh, pieces of feedback that we got from several, about three or four of the community members was this resolution was lacking specifics in the way of timelines and a plan of action, and I can't remember a couple other, uh, some other terminology like that. And the committee did put a lot of consideration into that comment and I think recognize, and I don't mean to speak on behalf of the subcommittee, but I, but I, it, it was, it was a very interesting discussion and, uh, it, this wasn't probably the place to put the plan in effect, it was making a commitment to, we're gonna do more than just listen to you a couple times over a couple different afternoons and then walk away, we're going to, uh, whether, whether that's with the IDE or whether that's with some, uh, council liaisons to the IDE or staff or other avenues, uh, reach out, uh, particularly the African-American community now, but, uh, you know, that obviously that would extend to other communities out into the future, but, um, uh, it was more of a laying out a commitment than it was necessarily specific steps, so I think, uh, again, I don't mean to speak for the committee and I think what you're gonna hear is there'd be continued dialogue at the council level, perhaps tonight, about what that might look like and then action by the council, uh, to move that, uh, commitment forward.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that clarity and I think kind of half of my comment was, um, to the extent we decide to move something, my preference would be to utilize the resources through the IDE that we have, uh, at our hands, uh, rather than creating an additional subcommittee, I guess, I, I wanted to, maybe I'm jumping the gun and assuming we're gonna have further discussion, I don't know, that's all.
All right, thank you, uh, anybody else have a comment? Anybody else have a comment?
Mayor Martinez, this is Councilwoman Roach, and I actually, I have some comments for later, but just wanted to ask the subcommittee. Let me back up a minute. Thank you to the subcommittee for the work that they've put in, and I really appreciate it. I wanted to ask a question about process of the subcommittee and just kind of get to know, you know, how many community members they met with. Were there specifics that they gave in, you know, when reading this, the report, staff report on this? You know, what were specific actions? Did they give any examples? And, and yeah, let's just start with that for there.
This is Councilmember Maloney. I, I, I can share my thoughts. I'm, I'm positive that Mr. Alvarado and Ms. Barajas both have, they saw things they would, they'll be happy to contribute to that. I would, I would struggle to wrap this all up in one defined package. We spent several hours with conversation with community members. We had about a dozen people that, that were able to actually meet at, at one meeting to, to have a conversation with us. So there was, we had, we had, we had very healthy dialogue and you know, I'm, I'll share what one of the specific feedbacks that maybe Mr. Zabel was kind of alluding to earlier. And thi- this is, it's not specific in terms of an ask, but this is, this is feedback directly. So in review of the peaceful protest draft, it quote, "sounds good." However, I strongly believe that is not enough to appease the black community. I guarantee that this will not be well-received by the black community due to the lack of supporting evidence of follow-through. While these sta- these statements "sound good," in quotes, and the intent may be in good conscience, the impact of failing to specifically address each area of the resolution without a strategic detail, detailed response and plan that includes timelines upon implementation will result in a negative perception of the black community. And that, that's what Mr. Zabel was referring to earlier as something that was then seconded by a number of, of the committee members. So there was conversation about how they, how the community felt, about, about fo- folks, um, holding weapons and, and stationed outside businesses, the possibility of those folks coming to rallies and their peaceful protests. And, and there was questions asked about what, what the city can do. And you know, there's, that's, 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 that's an interesting subject. I think we're all still trying to digest exactly how, what that means. One of the things that was really big focus was education. The, the, the people on the call made it very clear that they thought that a lot of what we're going through is a lack of education understanding between our community. And, you know, I'll certainly agree with Mr. Serrano that I think ultimately the IDE, that's why we tried to form, form that group. Though I, I'll go a little further and say, you know, again, jumping ahead in terms, to what I, what I was thinking is, is perhaps what we might need is a short-term task force to focus on this issue and this conversation specifically that then provides that information and, and that plan of action back to the, the IDE to, to implement. Because there's, there is a strong need here. The community was, of the community leaders that we talked to are very adamant that this is something that needs to be taken very seriously. And I believe they all committed to further dialogue. They would love to just help us understand what we need to do to make sure that we can continue to improve our community. That's, that's my perceptions of, I guess, that's I can't answer your, your question. And maybe Ms. Barajas or Mr. Alvarado could be able to jump in and add to that?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Go ahead, Mr. Alvarado.
I was giving a moment to see if Plan John to go ahead of me. But, um, yes, well, I, I think this is certainly, I think the way I framed it to the group is this is a kind of council's feeble attempt at really being able to set a direction, set a, a statement of who we want to be, a declaration of, you know, our intentions as a city leadership. So I appreciate the confidence of the rest of council to even allow for, for us to engage in these conversations. There's, there's certainly a, you know, a, a great sense of, I think, I think there was a sense of more questions than answers, I think, as we began our, our, our conversation. But as we, as folks came by, I think more than anything, the sense that we got from, from the community was that this was needed, but it was a first step. And to make sure that we have a very, just open and transparent dialogue. I think as it pertains to the current, the, the reasons for the protest, I think that, that was kind of a large point of the conversation that it wasn't just because we believe that the right to assembly is, is a good thing or that it's the right. But more of, thi- this is something that our, you know, the, the general, the country in general is having conversations about. And so we, I think that that was certainly very loud and clear that, you know, that there are some systemic issues that we as a city, we want to make sure that we, we do a good job in being able to have a, a citizen engagement when it comes to, you know, our policing, when it comes to being able to feel like people can speak their voices. And certainly in other parts of the country, there, there's folks who have assembled, who have not seen that, who have not, since that. So I think as far as the process, we scrambled to be able to figure out who should be part of that of that committee. And we were able to identify some really strong community leaders that have been involved in pro, in the protest, have been vocal leaders, but also have people of faith and people who really have great connection to, to the African-American community and to the community in general. And so they, they provided us some great feedback, which I think that to one degree or another, I think we were able to include into the statement, into the, into the resolution. And so that's kind of my, my take on it.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Anybody else?
Mayor. Yep. Can I just add to that? Sorry, I was taking my time to gather my thoughts before Ruben beat me to it. But the message we're trying to send out with this resolution is, is that Pasco, the city of Pasco, the council resolves to work along with our people of color, to work together on a plan to address the issues. As, as Mr. Maloney mentioned and Mr. Alvarado mentioned, we're looking at ways to incorporate the ideas. That being said, the timelines and work plans that were discussed with the Inclusivity, Diversity and Equity Commission, along with the subcommittees are, are pending. So they were not incorporated into the resolution. But again, it's because we, we're, we're resolving to work together. We're resolving to, you know, send the message that we acknowledge and we support the people of color. And so just adding to what Mr. Maloney and Mr. Alvarado said, it's, it's acknowledging that we, that we want to work together and that we support.
Thank you, Ms. Barajas. And I, I guess I would like to share a little bit. You know, I'm just, I, I'm pleased and I, and I thank the subcommittee for all the work they did, along with with the other community members and, and groups that participated in this. I was pleased to see how we expeditiously got, got to where we're at today. And I know that this is a, this is a big issue. And I don't think that the intent was to, was to resolve everything that needs to be resolved in, in, in creating this resolution. But this resolution to me, and, and we can sit here all day long and nitpick, and I don't want to call it nitpicking. And we can dissect it and we could help it, we can improve it, we can help it grow. But this, this resolution to me tells me where we were, where we are and where we're going. And, and I think it's in the right direction. And that's why I'm in favor of this because, you know, we, we read it, we looked it through. And I think this is a communication that says we're, you know, again, where we were, where we are and where we're headed. And we're headed in a good direction. And there's a lot of work to be done yet. But this is, this is a resolution just stating and acknowledging those things. And, and I, I'm in favor of it and I appreciate it. And I, I think this is a big step moving forward, and especially as quickly as everybody came together to put this together. I, I appreciate it. So that's what I have to say. Anybody else have a comment before we move on with the motion?
If I, if I may add, this is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think one, one of the, one of the comments that I think really kind of encapsulated and gave us some really good direction with, by, by Mr. Miranda Sparks. Essentially, he wanted, he, he said three things. One, that whatever we say should be very clear and well-defined of who we are. The second is to recognize that there's community members who are grieving and make sure that we as a, as a council acknowledge and respect that. And the third is to be able to have some expectations of who, who we want to be, like essentially, you know, this is, this is what's okay and this is what's not okay. And so that's, that's essentially what I, what I think encapsulated a lot of the conversation. And I think that, that kind of caught it, caught the essence of it.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Was there another comment?
This is Councilwoman Roach, and I just wanted to loop back around on, on the, the council members who worked on this subcommittee. And I definitely think this is, you know, not an attempt to resolve everything all at once. But I also think that, as it was said before, it is a first step and the first step of acknowledging that, you know, that, that we are reaffirming our commitments to inclusivity, diversity and equity in our community. You know, one of the things that's happening across the US is not only are our people affirming and organizations and cities and counties, but, you know, corporations are also affirming Apple, PayPal, Bank of America, Nike, Adidas, all these companies are, you know, committing, they're, they're backing up their affirmation and their acknowledgement with a commitment to something. And in this case, these companies are committing, you know, millions of dollars. So I think that I would echo that same concern that we should not just stop at the affirmation, but to also commit to, to something. And, and, you know, Councilmember Maloney said something about the lack of education. And I think that that's a, a great area to start at, especially, you know, also to echo what Councilmember Serrano said about, you know, giving the, our Inclusivity, Diversity and Equity Commission the ability to make recommendations to us and, and really get to work on something like this would be great to see some, some action. But the education piece would be, how are we, you know, could something be included in this that acknowledges, not just acknowledges, but but helps to recognize that, that Pasco has had and a, a black heritage here, an African-American community that, that came here long ago. And, and is that, is this an appropriate place to do, to include something like a commitment to educating from a city council perspective and as a city, that black heritage here in Pasco? And so that's a question I have, I guess, for the subcommittee. If that's something that we want to include. I think that would be, you know, we don't have millions to give, but that is one way that we can contribute in a meaningful way.
So this is Councilmember Maloney again. I, just from a process standpoint, the city manager gave us some, I think, some pretty sage advice, which is that three council members cannot and should not bind the rest of the council to actions that the council hasn't discussed in the body. And because we wanted to get this resolution through in a timely fashion, we felt that it was important that we acknowledge that there's more work to do, but not try to solve all the problems in this resolution. So we decided that the right answer for us to be able to present this tonight and have it approved and thought through, fully thought through, reviewed by our city attorney, but reviewed by the community members, was to put our pencils down and bring this in front of council. And then, and then ask for, for follow-up conversation with, with the council to see if we can perhaps come to what those next steps are to, to really have that, that community-driven, here's what they, here's what the community wants and needs from us, as opposed to us as council presuming that this or that or the other thing will be enough. It has to be community-centered. And I don't, and we just, in two weeks, on top of everything else, we just didn't have time to be able to bring that in front of council. So that's kind of, I think, my sense of why we, why, why you have what you have and not something more. I'll be honest, I was advocating for a considerable deeper set of actions. But the city manager was absolutely right. That would have been extremely presumptuous on my part to presuppose what this conversation would want out of, from the council.
Yeah, this is Councilmember Alvarado. Yeah, I, I very much appreciate that sentiment. I also want to apologize to Mr. Maloney. I, I was talking to someone in my household and realized my, my, my mic was, was on, so I apologize for that. But yes, I very much like to second that. There's a, we wanted to make sure our scope did not become very big with this. This is a first step. And in first steps, you know, you want to make sure that you spend time thinking about, you know, the reflective portion of who do we want to be. And so I think that that's more of what this effort was about. It was an, an, an opportunity to listen, an opportunity to be able to look at what we can do today. And then being able to say, okay, now we have a direction that, where we can have different ways that we can move forward. And I think that that could be something that council could entertain as a, as a full body.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. And again, I, I totally concur with you guys, with the rest of the council. I, a- again, this is something that it wasn't intended in my eyes to resolve the big problem, and there's still more work to get done. It's not like, it's not like the inclusivity committee is going to, you know, go sit down and, and go relax now. That's not, that's not the point. The point for me was, this was a good description of, of acknowledging and, and kind of giving us a direction of where we're going. So now there's a lot more work to be done. But I, again, I, I appreciate it. And I'm, I'm happy with what we have here today, but, but continuing on to do the things we have to do to move forward and, and making a commitment. So I'll give one more opportunity for anybody else to share before we continue with the motion. All right. So there's been a motion on the floor for option number one, to move and adopt Resolution number three-nine-six-eight, reaffirming the right of the people to peaceful assembly. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And thank you, council, once again. I'm proud of you. I'm proud of everyone here today and, and those that were a big part of putting this together for all the community members. All right. Next, we'll go to Section Number Nine, Unfinished Business. And there's none, new business. Number ten, we have a bid award for a fire station number eighty-four in Fire Headquarters. Mr. Bob Gier, are you on the line?
I certainly am, Mayor. Thank you. Mayor and council, we're happy to come in forward tonight to counsel to recommend a word of this bid. We had four bidders and we had an engineer's estimate of nine point two million and a low bid, a low base bid of seven point five, which actually included two alternates for this facility, which one was a fifth bay for storage of fire apparatus. And the second alternate was extension of utilities from off the site to the fire station, which we weren't sure if we were going to do that before we sold part of that property. So this will set us up to construct those facilities. We had, when we bonded, those facilities back in November, both Fire Station eighty-four and eighty-three, we estimated twelve million for Fire Station, excuse me, eleven million for Fire Station eighty-four. So we're quite a ways under both what we bonded and the engineer's estimate. So we'd like to ask council to approve this bid award.
Thank you, Mr. Gier. Appreciate it. And anybody have any comments or, or questions?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just briefly, I'd like to say that um, you know, when the, with all the bad financial news we, we were having to see and recognize lately, to see um, see some of these bid awards coming in at um, at, at under what we were estimating and under what we were planning is fantastic. I am, I know that, that takes a lot of hard work and tightening the belt and getting out that, that, that pencil and erasing uh some things that you want. Uh Chief Gear for uh, for this to come out right. So I really appreciate your efforts and glad we have a great bid in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. If there's no other, go ahead.
Sorry, no, I was gonna uh do the motion. No other comments? Uh, I move to award the bid for construction of Fire Station number eighty-four and Fire Headquarters to Jackson Contractor Group Incorporated in the amount of seven million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and five and eighty cents, including Washington State sales tax and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Thank you, Ms. Barajas. There's been a motion uh to approve the award for the bid, construction of Fire Station number eighty-four and Fire Headquarters. Do I hear a second?
This is Councilwoman Roach. I will second that.
It's been seconded by Councilwoman Roach. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Uh oppose, same sign? And it passes unanimously. Thank you and uh, thank you, Mr. Gear, uh, for all the work that was done in that. It uh, it looks favorable under the circumstances, so um, appreciate it and uh looking forward to it. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number eleven, miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Zabel, would you like to start off?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of things. Uh, you alluded to one earlier and that's the drive-through COVID-nineteen testing. So Benton Franklin Health District today put out a, a press release that I, I think's worth going over again for folks. But uh, they've, they've been able to set up drive-through uh COVID testing at both the um, track or Hapo Center in Pasco, as well as Toyota Center over in Kennewick. And uh, those sites will be open, I think, starting Wednesday. And uh, this week will be open Wednesday through Saturday from eight AM to one PM. And then next weekend and the weeks going forward, uh, at least while we're, for the time being, there'll be Tuesdays through Saturdays, eight to one PM. Uh, you do have to make an appointment. You need to call two-one-one, not nine-one-one, two-on-one to make an appointment. And uh, hopefully this doesn't confuse people. You can make your appointment between eight AM and five PM. So that's when you can call the two-on-one line. Uh, when you can get your uh test is eight to one. I, I mentioned that um, you know, to the phase-two efforts that Deputy Mayor Barajas uh discussed earlier, uh increased testing is one of the, one of the factors considered by Department of Health, State Department of Health in uh determining when counties can, can uh come out of phase one and into phase two under the Safe Start Program. And uh also acknowledge uh this is a joint effort. Uh, a lot of folks involved in it, Benton Franklin Health District, uh Department of Health, State Department of Health and uh Benton Franklin Emergency Management, as well as Washington State National Guard will actually be there uh staffing the site. So a lot of partners in this to try to help uh, help move uh the Tri-Cities forward. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, just uh, uh regarding the, the cares money, uh, we've been discussing off and on a couple of meetings. Uh, we had some good news out of um, Department of Commerce today. Uh, they, they're listening to folks like uh our Finance Director Sigdel and other finance directors in terms of administering this money. And they've made a little progress on uh, in terms of whether it's a reimbursement or whether it's just a, a grant. And so we've gotten past the reimbursement piece. And uh Commerce, I think, is kind of indicating, and I'll ask for a head nod from the Finance Director. Yeah, they're indicating that uh, by their actions, that they're, they're gearing up and we should probably be seeing our contracts soon. So we can start distributing the money. And then our Community and Economic Development Director White uh is making some progress on uh administrator to develop the funds. Uh, we did have one that formed on Saturday. We wanna talk to them before uh moving forward with the, with an administrator. But uh, so things are, as things are shaping it up and hoping, hopefully we'll get uh, we'll get our contracts from uh Commerce very soon and be able to start getting that money out of the community in the next week or so. Okay, that's all I had for this.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. And I'd like to just jump back to the uh, to the free testing that will be going on, on Wednesday. I, I just, I, one of the critical parts of this virus is that um, a lot of times there won't even be symptoms and people could be carrying it and spreading it. Uh, but what, what I did read was that if you do have symptoms such as a, a fever, a sense of not tasting food very well, if you have the symptoms like that, go get tested, please. And that doesn't mean that you can go out and go to Walmart or Lowe's or anything like that. Just go get tested. And then please uh, uh, go back to your home if you feel sick, uh, whether it's uh, whether it's to go get tested or if you're going to work, if you've, if you have symptoms, please stay home and protect others. The other thing is um, um, you know, if, if there's not a big line and, and you're willing, it, you know, go get tested just to make sure it's free. Uh, and these are the things that we have uh available and that we're doing to try to get these numbers down, uh, to try to, you know, get our small businesses open back up and, and get things going again in, in our community. So thank you very much for that. Is there anybody else with any other miscellaneous discussion? So.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
Uh, just briefly, um, uh Keeper Action News, uh, just a couple of hours ago, um, apparently had received a comment from um, that apparently the Benton and Franklin County applications for moving to phase two have officially been put on pause pending further discussion. And DOH, uh Department of Health will be meeting with local health departments uh later this week to discuss next steps. So not the news that I think we were um hoping for, but I, I ga- I think with the uh information that you and um, um, Mayor Potem Barajas uh shared with us earlier, um, it, it's unfortunately not surprising. Hopefully, hopefully more people in our community will understand that if uh they comply with social distancing and comply with wearing masks, that our businesses can get back to work. Um, that's, that's what it's gonna take, I think. And that's what the health experts think. So I just wanted to just congratulate you for all the hard work I know you've personally done to make sure that we're spreading the, the message. And, and really implore anyone listening, please, please, please try to, to, to limit the spread of this disease so we, we can get back to some sense of normalcy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. I appreciate that. And um, yes, again, I, I, if there's anybody who doesn't like to use these, it's me. But I will give you a tip. You can put some lavender in there and it smells good. So, so that helps a little bit, but make sure you keep them washed. So with that said, appreciate your comments. Uh, we're gonna go to the next item. And there is no further items, so this meeting uh is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for showing up. And again, be safe and uh, and be considerate. And let's not be resistant to uh, to making it right for everybody in our community. And have a, a great week. We'll see you next week. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Bye.